Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Planning Commission. I would like to call on Mr. Turner to explain the procedure for the public to make comments at tonight's meeting first, please.
Yes, thank you Chair. Regarding the procedures for communicating tonight, the commissioners will have their webcams on for the duration of the meeting. For those presenting an item on tonight's agenda, we ask that you also turn on your microphone and webcam during the presentation for your item. A member of staff will assign you keyboard and mouse controls if you are displaying a presentation. We then kindly ask that you turn off your webcam and microphone when done with the presentation portion of your item unless called upon by the Chair. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions by clicking on the hand icon on your screen upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. If you're calling into tonight's meeting, please click star nine on your keypad to notify staff that you have a comment. And with that, I will send it back to you.
Thank you. So I will start with calling the role Commissioner Barnes.
Good evening.
Thank you, DeCarty.
Good evening.
Commissioner Harris.
Hi everyone, good evening.
Commissioner Tate.
Hello.
And myself makes five, President Commissioner Chair Doran. We have two commissioners absent tonight, Commissioner Kennedy and Commissioner Riggs, but we do have a quorum. I would like to first ask Ms. Sandmeyer if she has any reports and announcements for us.
Yes, good evening Chair Doran and Commissioners. So this Thursday, there will be a free webinar on ADUs and that'll be at 6:30 PM. The county will be presenting on recent ADU-related legislation and there will be chat rooms for specific cities with specific city regulations. So the link to that should be posted on the city's events webpage within the next couple of days. That concludes my announcements, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sandmeyer. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, I'm going to move to the consent calendar. The only item on the consent calendar tonight is the approval of minutes and court reporter transcript from the September 13, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting.
Doran, point of order.
Sure.
Does public comment come before consent calendar?
Good point. It does indeed. It does on tonight's agenda anyway. Thank you for pointing that out. So I will back up and ask Mr. Turner to look out for any hands raised if anyone would like to make a public comment at this time. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda and items listed under consent calendar. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda. Therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up in a public comment other than to provide general information. Just like to add that we will have a public comment period again for the items that are on the agenda. Another opportunity to speak on those. This time is for items not on the agenda. And Mr. Turner, do we have any hands raised this time?
Yes, we do have one hand raised at the moment. So at this time, I will introduce Roxanne Rorapa. Roxanne, you will have three minutes to give your public comment. Please state your name, your name, political jurisdiction in which you live and/or your organizational affiliation. And I will unmute you. Don't have unmuting powers at this time. Vaughn, if you can maybe help me out here. Go ahead Roxanne.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Hello. My name is Roxanne Rorapa. I live at 885 Sherman Avenue with my husband Vic Lovell. My husband Vic Lovell has lived here in Menlo Park at this address, which is in Ray Mueller's district. And he has lived here since he bought the house in 1973. I've lived here since 2021, I mean 2001, when I married him. So it's been 20 years of wonderful living here. And all of the time since my husband moved in in 1973 and long before that, has been living in our backyard, a beautiful valley oak tree. Right now, that valley oak tree is four feet in diameter estimated, 50 feet high with a canopy of 60 feet about. It's a beautiful tree. It has lived here longer than any of us, probably well over 100 years. There is a property being developed by a company called Thomas James Homes, which is next door to us at 905 Sherman. We recently received preliminary site plans or something for that. And they did not put our tree in the right place. They put the tree in a different person's yard. They put it 25, 28 probably, but probably about 28 feet south of where the tree actually is. By putting the tree there, south of where it is, it changes the whole need of being careful of the tree while they develop that property. About 20 feet maybe of our canopy actually covers the space that they wish to build an ADU on. I had assumed that they would take great care in mapping out the tree and making sure that an arborist looked after that the correct precautions were taken to protect my tree, our tree, the tree, our neighbor's tree, this city's tree, the tree that has done so much for so many people and creatures and our environment for many years. Apparently, they could not see where it was. They also left our garage off the site plan. I'm very upset about this. I would also like to say that the notice of application that was sent never mentioned whom I contact about trees, but luckily the planning commission people were, I mean, the planning department people were very helpful and I was able to talk to them. Thank you.
You, Mr. Turner, do we have any other hands raised this time?
I do see one more hand raised. At this time, I just want to give a quick reminder that I did not give at the beginning of my speech. If somebody else will be speaking from the same phone number or Zoom account, please let us know at the end of the comments so we don't skip over you if you re-raise your hand. So at this time, I will introduce Pam Jones. As a reminder, you will have three minutes to share your comment or question. Please state your name, address, political jurisdiction in which you live, or your organizational affiliation. And so Pam, you may unmute yourself now.
Good evening and thank you. And this is Pam Jones calling from her Zoom account. And I see my picture from the last meeting is up. I have a couple of questions about ADUs. And I would like to know, how many applications have we had since, say, January 2019? And how many have been approved? And what districts have they been approved in? How long did it take people to get their permits? And also, how many units that have been here for decades that did, that needed to have work done on them to qualify for the new laws? Have we had and what have we done to help those people? And absolutely do not expect an answer to that question immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that wishes to speak this time?
I do not see any raised hands at the moment, but maybe if we want to give a few seconds. Again, as a reminder, if you do have a public comment, go ahead and click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. Or if you're calling in, press star nine. And I'm not seeing any additional hands raised at this time.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment this time, resume our agenda. We will have additional opportunities for public comment with respect to each item that is on the agenda later in the meeting. So the next item is our consent calendar. The only item on the consent calendar is the approval of minutes and the court reporter transcript from the September 13, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting. Does anyone have any corrections or anything else that they want to do to the minutes that would require us to take them out of the consent calendar? Not seeing any hands, so I will call the role for approval of the consent calendar, Mr. Barnes.
I'm abstaining.
Okay, Commissioner DeCarty.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Tate.
I'm also abstaining.
Okay. I see that's because Mr. Barnes, Commissioner Tate, you weren't at that meeting.
That's correct.
Due to an absence.
Okay, so I will vote in favor. He gives us three votes in favor and two abstentions. We have a quorum here tonight with five members present. And I believe we have a majority of a quorum, so I believe the consent calendar will be passed. Ms. Sandmeyer, if that's incorrect, I'm sure you'll correct me. So I'm not hearing anything. I'm going to rule the minutes approved, the consent calendar approved. Okay. Moving on to the public hearing, the first item on our agenda for public hearing, item F1, is a use permit by Thomas James Homes for 760 College Avenue. This is a request for a use permit to demolish an existing one-story, single-family residence with an attached garage and construct a new two-story residence with an attached garage on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot with an area in the R1U, single-family urban residential zoning district. This was continued from the meeting of September 27, 2021. We have a staff report by Mr. Turner. Do you have anything to add to the staff report?
Good evening. I do not have anything to add to the staff report at this time, but happy to take any questions.
Do we have any clarifying questions for Mr. Turner at this point? Seeing none, I believe we have someone from Thomas James Homes to speak about the application.
Yes, that's the, good evening Chair Doran, Vice Chair DeCarty, and members of the commission. My name is Cynthia Tebow with Thomas James Homes. Thank you for your time this evening and for allowing us to present the project. Just as a reminder, you know, it's been a little while since the last meeting on September 27. Just wanted to quickly go through, this project is in the zone R1U. It is 5,618 square foot lot. And it is 53 wide by 106 long. And the width and the lot size is the reason for the use permit being substandard. The proposed home is a two-story residence, four-bedroom, four-and-a-half bath with an attached two-car garage. Livable square footage proposed is 2,383 square feet. We are within compliance of FAL and coverage. And the home is located on a corner lot on Blake and College Avenue. And the style we have proposed is a farmhouse. Specifically regarding trees on this property, there were a total of 14 trees analyzed on and off the site. Five of the trees off-site, six street trees, and three trees on-site. Five trees are proposed for removal, nine trees to be retained and protected of the ones removed or proposed for removal, one non-heritage on-site due to health, two heritage trees on-site, one bay laurel due to health and development, and one Japanese petersporum for health reasons. There are two street trees, the two southern magnolias that were proposed for removal due to development. And this is the reason that the hearing was continued to tonight to discuss these two trees and questions around these two trees. So just to go into a little bit of a background on these specific trees. They were originally proposed to be retained. They were not the healthiest of trees, but we proposed to retain them and put our driveway between them. And then working with the city arborist, he had some concerns about us damaging the roots during construction and putting the driveway in. So we did some root exploration. And due to the fault of our own, we accidentally didn't cover the roots in time, which caused some damage to these two trees. And since we have definitely improved our process, so we don't have these, this same issue again to make sure we're protecting trees moving forward. But due to that, we did some additional analysis and from that, the city arborist, as well as our arborist, recommended the best thing to do based on the damage that was done to the trees was to remove them. And then in its place, plant some larger trees. So we have four replacement trees proposed, two 60-inch box London plane trees, one 48-inch box Edith Vogue Southern Magnolia, and one 15-gallon London plane tree. At the last meeting, there were some questions from the neighbor, as well as from the commission regarding the two street southern magnolia trees. And can they be retained? Is there a way to maintain them to allow for that, the street canopy to be maintained? So we did actually send our arborist out back on-site, as well as the city arborist went back out on-site to do some additional investigation. Their conclusion was the same as the original, which was they still recommend removal of both of these trees. I have some notes here to go over about why they still recommend removal and replacement. So there's two trees, tree number four, which is to the left of the proposed driveway, tag number 3090. Both of these are southern magnolias. So the tree number four was damaged due to construction activity and that impacted the critical root zone. Root decay. And then there was major structural health problems even from the beginning, actually. Stem griddling roots as it matured further decline, decline of health. The canopy is not full and limbs are small as it has not had enough water over its lifespan. It's been to 10 feet above grade. And there is a six-inch diameter pruning wound 11 feet above grade with moderate decay. So that's regarding tree number four to the left of the driveway. And then tree number five, which is to the right of the driveway, also a southern magnolia. Again, construction activity impacted the critical root zone. So the other thing I want to clarify as well is we actually obtained a tree removal permit already for these two trees and we didn't remove them. However, between the time that we received the permit and that we had the hearing, we did install our construction driveway, which included compacting some gravel between the trees and that caused further damage to the roots. And then since the hearing, we actually did add tree protection around these two trees, but it was already damaged. And then just going further on tree number five, which is to the right of the driveway. It's also suppressed as it's in the drip line of the coast live oak tree on the neighboring property, which is preventing both trees from thriving. The tree is out of balance east, low branch growing over driveway hindering access for taller vehicles. So that will need to be cut back if we were to retain. There's decay in limbs and it's also close to the proposed gas line and the proposed driveway. And then the vines covering the lower trunk. So that's kind of a summary of the reason it was, it was recommended for removal by both our arborist and the city arborist. And I actually have Tom Stein on the call today, who was our arborist from California Tree and Landscape Consulting, to answer any further questions regarding these two trees. Thank you.
Thank you. We will have public comment and then after that, we'll have an opportunity for discussion by the commission. But at this time, if we have any clarifying questions from the commission, now's the time for that.
I do.
Commissioner Harris.
Yeah, I just, you stated that there was further damage to those trees based on when you were starting to pack the driveway. And I was just wondering, was that before or after the arborist came to inspect them again?
That happened before the arborist came back out. It happened before our hearing. And that was, we basically obtained our tree removal permit as well as our demolition permit. So we demolished the house, installed our construction driveway, and then the hearing happened. And that was the time that it came into question about, should these trees actually be removed? And at that time, we went ahead and installed tree protection, but it had already happened.
Do we have any other clarifying questions for the applicant? I'm not seeing any at this time. So we'd like to open it up for public comment on this application at this time. Mr. Turner, do we have any hands raised from the public?
We do have a couple of hands raised. So at this time, I'll introduce Roxanne Rorapa. Rorapa again. So Roxanne, you'll have, please state your first and last name. You'll have three minutes to share your comments or questions. Please clearly state your name, address, political jurisdiction, or affiliation. And as a reminder, if multiple people will be speaking from the same account or phone number, please let us know at the end of your time, so we don't skip over you. And Roxanne can unmute yourself now.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay, this is Roxanne Rorapa again. I live at 885 Sherman Avenue with my husband Victor Lovell. Well, this comes to the heart of it, doesn't it? I think the problem is Thomas James is putting their too big of houses on these little lots. They're just tearing down houses. They don't care about the trees. And I'm afraid they're going to kill my tree too. And by the way, I watched the last meeting on September 27th. And I want to say I was very proud of you in the, in the Planning Commission for sticking up for the trees and for hanging in there because I was not told anything about going to the environmental qual, Environmental Commission as to appeal some decision made about permits for tree removal or excavation or anything like that. Nobody told me any, there's nothing like that in the green thing that I've received so far. Now, I don't know if that happens later. I don't know if that happens later in the process, but it, it hasn't happened so far for us. And it doesn't, doesn't seem to be mentioned in the thing. So, and another thing, I would say the other person from Thomas James, her attitude at that meeting, she was, she showed no form of contrition. She was not at all sorry for what happened to those trees. And she was also seemed to be so put out that you were going to have her put that thing on pause and make her come back after looking into the trees a little bit more. And all I have to tell her is there's a little dead squirrel somewhere in heaven playing a very tiny, tiny violin for her. Because they're making lots of money off this and they got to do it right. And I think if they can't figure out how to put these houses in their lots without killing trees, without lying about things and without messing stuff up. And I don't know if they're lying, but they sure aren't getting things right on the stuff they're sending out, then maybe the city doesn't need to have them developing homes in this area. Because we don't need $5 million houses and that's what we're getting from them. And they're taking away the smaller homes that young families could be buying. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Turner, I believe you said we had another public comment?
Yes. At this time, I will introduce Sarah Ordas. Sarah, please state your first and last name. As a reminder, we'll have three minutes to share your comment or question. Please clearly state your name, address, political jurisdiction in which you live, or organization affiliation. And Sarah, you can mute yourself now.
Hi there. I spoke at the last meeting and I want to thank the commission for taking this seriously and reflecting not only on this particular house and this particular set of trees, but also on the heritage tree ordinance more broadly. I guess really I see this case as in, as a case study of maybe a broader set of dynamics happening in our city. And I'm not sure if this is the appropriate forum and I certainly welcome input as to where the appropriate forum is. But as you know, me and another person have, we've been looking at the number of permit applications. And what, especially the development-related permit applications and the fact that, as we discussed last time, 98.5% of those applications for heritage tree removals were approved. And so I guess I'm wondering what does this heritage tree designation mean, you know? What, is it simply just an administrative roadblock that we will cut down a tree, we'll get the arborist to tell us what tree we have to plant and then we're going to go plant that? And yeah, I mean, I think that's my question. I'm also curious about the processes that have been instituted to prevent further mistakes from happening and what the accountability is there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other members of the public that wish to speak now?
At this time, I do not see any other hands raised. But maybe we give it a minute. As a reminder, if you do have a public comment, hit that hand, raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. Or if you're calling in, press star nine on your keypad. And I'm not seeing any additional hands raised at this time.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the commission for the discussion. I'm just going to make an observation to start that I sorely miss Commissioner Riggs tonight. I think he's got a better understanding of trees and the interplay of trees and construction than anyone else available, but unfortunately, he's not with us tonight. Do we have members of the commission that would like to speak at this time? Commissioner Harris.
Thank you Chair Doran. Through the chair, if I may.
Through the chair, if I may ask a question of Ms. Tebow. So I realize that a lot of times tree health and removal is not our domain in the planning because some of these things usually get taken care of before we get here. At our last meeting, the representative, who I understand was not you, from Thomas James, said that you all had changed your policy and you mentioned that today with respect to exploratory trenching so that the situation would not arise again, the decision that the situation where the decline caused by your company's trenching, leading to the approval of the removal of the trees which you wanted to remove in the first place. I'm just interested to hear what those new policies are and how and who will be implementing them. And now we seem to have another comment about a different situation. I'd also like to hear how you just deal with trees in those types of situations as well. So if you could please just let me know how that's going to work in the future so that we don't have this situation again. Thank you.
So to clarify, actually originally we were planning to retain the trees even though they were not in the best of health. But we understand that, you know, it's better to retain as many trees as we can to maintain the canopy in the neighborhood and for the city. And yes, we did make a mistake on this, these two specific street trees the first time and we hope last time that this error will happen. We did definitely implement new policies internally within our company to ensure that that does not happen again. So within that, we need, we are always covering up any roots after exploratory trenching within twenty-four hours' time. And that is per recommendation of our arborist as well as the city arborist. And just to go into further detail specifically regarding Roxanne's comment at nine oh five Sherman, that project is in first round of designer view currently, so it is pretty early on in the project. We did receive comments from neighbors and we're working on correcting some inconsistency in the plan. So that is currently in progress and that will definitely be resolved. And also I'd like to note that we do work closely with the city arborist and specifically as an example for seven sixty college. The house was approved and then it took us an additional four months to go through the process of tree removal to get approval from the city arborist. So we are understanding that it is a big deal and we try not to remove trees unless it's absolutely necessary. And just as a company, we don't like to remove trees. We like to work around them as much as possible. Some of the reasons we may propose for a true removal are unhealthy trees and we're recommended by our arborist to remove. And sometimes we still won't remove them. Other, you know, times if it's in the building envelope of a specific lot and there's just no way for us to be able to build anything, then that could be a reason for removal. But other than that, we really do try to design around trees and we do like trees. We think it adds value to the property and to our future homeowners of the property. So I just wanted to add that as well.
Okay, thank you.
We have other commissioners that would like to speak now. Commissioner Ricciardi.
Yeah, can I ask the same question of staff? You know, from this experience, is there anything that is the staff engaging in these processes that you take away or will do differently going forward?
Mr. Turner, do you want to respond to that? Same way?
Yeah, Karina may be better suited to answer this one.
Yeah, I think we're definitely looking at how to handle the demolition and making sure kind of double checking that they do have the correct tree protection measures also for demolition because I think that was part of the issue here. Certainly with the exploratory trenching, we can look at sending reminders and following up to make sure those trenches are refilled. But it is, you know, we do have to rely somewhat on the professionalism of the of the arborist for the applicant's team. And we have to rely, put some responsibility on them that they will follow through with the recommended actions. But we will definitely look into this further because we certainly don't want to lose any trees unnecessarily.
All right, just one follow-up question. Just in the final assessment here, our heritage tree policy was approved in the last couple of years, the most current version. Is that correct? I can't remember one. Okay, so it's fairly recently. And under the heritage tree policy, just as the the final accounting here is the two trees, tree trees are gone. There are four replacement trees. Was there any other application of the heritage tree policy? If you could just remind us, was there a fee that was also paid and what was that again?
I think.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there was the the standard heritage tree removal permit fee applied to this project. The one additional, I guess it wasn't necessarily a fine, but we were requiring larger replacement trees than would otherwise be required. Typically, the applicants are only supposed, are only required to replace the value of the tree or trees that are being removed. In this case, we did have that pretty significantly from from the size of tree that would have been required to be replaced. I believe is, it would roughly from the values of the replacement trees, the value of the existing trees would have been about a twenty-four inch box tree. In this case, we are requiring two sixty inch box trees, which are fairly, fairly large replacement trees based on the the value of the existing trees. So there wasn't any additional fines or fees liberty against TJ Holmes.
Thank you.
So I think I would like to just respond to a question from the public comment. So what can we do about, you know, the heritage tree situation? You know, I think we have a well thought out heritage tree ordinance. The frustration that we've been hearing from the public is that the ordinance isn't followed with their violations. So I would suggest something for people to think about is, you know, an amendment to revision of the heritage tree ordinance to increase the penalties for violations. Because I think that there is a lot of process around heritage trees. There's a lot of thought that goes into heritage trees. But somehow, you know, things happen that I think are not in conformity with the heritage tree ordinance as in this case. So that might be something to think about, meaning the ordinance is not within our power. That's something the city council would have to do, but you know, that might help the situation. Do we have any other commissioners that would like to speak now? Mr. Barnes.
Thank you, Chair. Question to the applicant, which is not directly related to plans, but related to the project and went out of curiosity. So as I was looking up this project, I noticed that, for instance, on on Zillow or on Redfin, the project is already listed as as having been sold, which interestingly enough shows all the rep, the renderings for the project that is before us tonight for a use permit. However, it is shown as being a sold property, which one would assume that the plant has presented this evening for a use permit would have already been approved when in fact they are not. And I wanted to get some idea, is it you that are posting these or is it another entity that's posting these? And it seems presumptuous for those plans to be out. Any thoughts on that? And through the, through the chair, the applicant, if that's permissible.
Yes, so we do offer homes for sale prior to having official approval. And we disclose to any potential buyer that this project has not been approved. It's going through a planning process and it is subject to changes. And if any changes happen that they are not happy with, then they are more than, you know, welcome to not purchase the property. But it is a process that we do follow and we do disclose everything. And we put it, usually we put everything on our plans as well that if they were to purchase the property, there could be significant changes due to the planning process.
Thank you for that. My question is is more about representations to the general public. As I look at the Redfin or for instance, Zillow right now, not having a face-to-face with you, I don't see any disclaimers about the design. I don't see any disclaimers about it being approved and not approved. Do you? I guess I don't think it's a great look to be marketing properties that aren't in fact approved from a design perspective. And I think you might want to consider that in your marketing prior to use permit approval.
Yes, thank you. That is something that we didn't really consider and definitely something that I'll take back to our team. So thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else who wants to speak now? Would anyone care to make a motion? Mr. Ricciardi.
Yeah, I'll move approval as submitted.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Motion to approve as submitted has been made and seconded. I'll call the role, Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Ricciardi.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Tate.
Yes.
Although in favor as well, the motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to move to item F two on our agenda. This is a use permit by Courtney Brigham and Darren Ewan Hook, excuse me if I butchered your name, nine thirty-three Millie Avenue. This is a request for a use permit to demolish existing one-story, single-family residence in detached garage and construct a new two-story residence with an attached garage and a basement on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width and area in the R one U, single-family urban residential zoning district. We have a staff report from Mr. Paz. Do you have anything to add to the staff report?
I do, thank you, Chair. There's a one correction to the data sheet, which is attachment C, the proposed side setbacks for this proposed residence are shown correctly on the project plans. Attachment D, the left side setback would be approximately five point four feet. And the right side setback for the light well, which is the the closest building element to the side would be five point four feet. And then the the mass of the structure at the the right side would be approximately nine point three feet from the property line. And those are listed incorrectly in the proposed setback row and column of the data sheet.
Yeah, it looks like they're off quite a bit on the data sheet. Thank you. Do we have any clarifying questions from Mr. Paz from the commission? Seeing none, I'd like to open this application up for public comment at this time. Mr. Turner, do we have any hands raised from the public?
At this time, I do not see any hands raised. But just as a reminder, if you do have a, if you do want to give public comment, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. Or if you're calling in, click star nine on your phone keypad. I don't see any hands raised at this time.
Thank you. I'm going to close public comment. Do we have a representative from the applicant to talk about the project?
Hello, yes, this is Darren Yvonne Duke.
And Courtney Brigham, hello.
For the applicants. And with us tonight is our architect, Steve Schonke.
Thank you. Did you guys want to make a presentation about the project? You or you? Oh, now's your chance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, City Staff. Thank you for your time and consideration of our plans. I'm Darren Yvonne Duke.
And I'm Courtney Brigham.
With us tonight is our architect. We are long-term residents of Menlo Park and have lived on Millie Avenue for fifteen years. We have two boys who attend our great Menlo Park schools where we regularly volunteer in classrooms and school events for their soccer teams, PTO, traditionally host an annual fundraiser. We are looking to build our forever home on our current Millie Avenue property, a family home with more space overall, so our growing boys can each have their own bedroom. Spare bedroom also to host our out-of-town family and friends. We believe our architect has created a beautiful design that fits well in our streets and the greater neighborhood. We appreciate Menlo Park's vision for making trees a key component of the city's landscape. And in our application have included a landscape design with multiple new trees and gardens. As soon as we had a viable design, we conducted outreach with our neighbors that consisted mostly of one-on-one meetings on our patio to view and discuss the design and answer any questions. All of our neighbors expressed support for our project, the beautiful design, and their desire for us to remain their neighbors. Millie Avenue is a special street with wonderful families where we have numerous and sometimes weekly get-togethers, potlucks, sharing each other's garden harvests, and recently an outdoor movie night. We are grateful to be part of such a vibrant neighborhood. Thank you for your time this evening and for your consideration of our use permit application.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was your architect going to speak or was that not planned? You have your, are you muted? Lower left.
You, sorry, got it. Is that better?
Yep.
Okay. So Steve Schonke, Menlo Park Architect. And I think they did a great job to just present what we're trying to accomplish. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Okay. I just realized that I opened the public comment too soon. So in a minute, I will reopen public comment. But in the meantime, do we have clarifying questions from the commission for the applicant or his architect? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Mr. Turner, I was supposed to go to public comment after the presentation. So let's reopen the public comment and see if we have any hands raised now.
I don't see any hands raised at this time. But again, if if you would like to give public comment, please hit the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. Or if you're calling in, press star nine on your phone.
So no hands raised?
No hands raised.
Okay, I'm going to close comment, public comment once again and bring it back to the commission. Do we have commissioners that would like to speak on the project this time? Not seeing any hands raised. If there's no comments from the commission, do we have a motion? Commissioner Ricciardi, oh, I think Commissioner Harris won the fastest finger raised there.
Okay, I, just before making motion, I just want to say I like and appreciate the way that you
Okay, um, I, just before making motion, I just want to say I like and appreciate the way that you've positioned the new home, providing. The maximum distance between the two adjoining neighbors. I think that was nicely done. Um, and I also appreciate the way that you, um, worked with all your neighbors. Appreciate that. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the use permit for this home.
Hey, do we have a second? Mr. DeCarty?
Second.
Okay, um, I think just for the transcript, I would like to get a verbal second, but, um.
I said I second.
Thank you. Um, in case, I'm gonna call the role, Commissioner Barnes.
And I'm sorry, before I, uh, give my vote, I do want to also compliment the applicant on. The presentation of the project. And the plans and then the outreach. And the, the sighting on the lot, so. And with that said, I am a yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner DeCarty.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Tate.
Yes.
And I would just like to add my own comment that I, I very much appreciate the outreach to the neighbors that makes, uh. Our job easier, I think, when these things have been worked out before they get to us. So I'm gonna vote in favor as well. Uh, the application is approved as submitted with a five oh vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna move to item F three on our agenda, Architectural Control and Use Permit by Paul Turek. Uh, for twenty-seven ten Sand Hill Road. This is a request for Architectural Control and Use Permit, construct a new exterior elevator and staircase. Attached to an existing two-story commercial building in the C one C. Administrative Professional and Research Restrictive Zoning District. Um, we have a report on this, uh, by Ms. Khan. Ms. Khan, did you have anything to add to the staff report?
Uh, good afternoon, good evening Chair and, uh, Commissioners and members of the public. Uh, no, there are no updates to the staff report, uh, at this time. However, I'm here to answer any of your questions. We do have the applicant, uh, as well. Available tonight to answer your questions.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any clarifying questions from Ms. Khan? Okay, uh, would the applicant like to make a presentation or talk about their application now?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, good evening Chair, Vice Chair and the Commissioners. Um, I'm Ash, uh, with Studio G Architects and we have Steve from Diffco West as well. Um, so Diffco West is the, um, landlord for this campus. Uh, there are no elevators on any of the buildings. So to increase leasing opportunities, um, we've proposed to add an elevator to a two-story building. Um, at twenty-seven ten Sand Hill. We are modifying the existing stair, which are the only curved stair on the campuses on Sand Hill and making it more, um. Straight-lined, uh, and more inclusive with design as well.
Thank you. Do we have any clarifying questions for the applicant and commission? I'm not seeing any, so I'm gonna open public comment on this application now. Mr. Turner, do we have anyone that, uh, members of the public that want to speak on this?
I do not see any hands raised at this time, uh, but as a reminder, if you do have a, uh, if you do want to give mo- public comment. Please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen or press star nine if you are calling in.
Okay, let's give it a few minutes. A few seconds anyway.
And we still do not have any hands raised at this time.
Okay, let's, uh, close public comments and bring it back to the commission for any discussion, comments or questions. Other questions the commission might have. Would anybody, uh, like to speak, Commissioner DeCarty?
It's just a question of the applicant, um. So the change with the elevator and the staircase being in the same footprint, congratulations. I think that looks like it works really well. It's a pretty major change to the facade and the entryway and the roofline at the top and then also the color. Are, what with the rest of the buildings in the property, are they having a similar kind of change to update or? Or will this one look very different relative to the others?
That's a great question. Thanks. Thank you, Commissioner DeCarty. So there is another building which is very close to the new look that's being proposed. The tenant is Kleiner Perkins. Um, they, they have painted over the entire exposed brick into white. So this is not going to be the first building to have this color scheme in the campus. Um, it is going to be the second, but I think eventually the plan for Diffco is to make them all conducive, um, as and when budget allows.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone else, uh, from the commission want to speak this time? Not seeing anyone. Does anyone care to make a motion?
My night, I'll move approval as submitted.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve as submitted. I'm gonna call the role, Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
Commissioner DeCarty.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Tate.
Yes.
Although yes as well, so the application is approved and submitted, uh, with a five zero vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, we'll move to the final item on our agenda for tonight, the final item on the public hearing. Uh, F four, this is a general plan amendment in rezoning. City Menlo Park for one oh five, one fifty-five Constitution Drive and thirteen ninety-five Chrysler Drive. This is a request for a general plan amendment to change the land use designation of an approximately. Thirty-six hundred square foot portion of an existing approximately eight point nine acre parcel. From commercial business park to public quasi-public and to change the land use designation. Of an approximately thirty-six hundred square foot portion of an existing approximately five thousand square foot parcel. From public quasi-public to commercial business park. In addition, the area with a resulting public quasi-public land use would be rezoned to the PF Public Facilities District. And the area with a resulting commercial business park land use would be rezoned M three X Commercial Business Park, Conditional Development District. Requested entitlements are associated with a lot line adjustment to construct a new city-owned pump station. At thirteen ninety-five Chrysler Drive. This was continued from the meeting of October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. We have a staff report from Mr. Smith. Would you like to add anything or correct anything on the staff report this time?
Good evening Chair Doran and Planning Commissioners. Um, I do not have anything to add to the staff report this evening. Uh, but happy to answer any clarifying questions that you may have.
We have any clar- we do have clarifying questions for Commissioner DeCarty.
All right, I know I've been in a time warp, but isn't October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one in the future?
No, it's not. We have been.
This is twenty twenty-two.
No, this is twenty twenty-one, but it's November now.
Oh, my God. Thank you. Right.
No, it's a charge. Do you have any other clarifying questions?
No.
Any further questions?
I have a clarifying question. Can we approve projects a year in the future?
And take a year off. That would be. Okay, I don't think we have any clarifying questions.
I did, I, I guess.
Sorry, Commissioner Harris.
Yeah, I, I, I gotta say, I'm just having a hard time kind of comprehending this and I just wonder if maybe. Um, we could have acting principal planner, uh, explain it in a little bit more detail, especially in case there are some of the public that are listening and are a little bit confused as well.
So I, I think we're gonna do clarifying questions now and then we're gonna have a presentation.
Oh, we are? Okay.
Then we'll go to public comment and then we can.
So I, I was, I just need a lot of clarification on everything. So if this is not clarified question time, then I, and that's not. Anyway, I will come back.
That was, that was my expectation. Correct me if I'm wrong. Yeah, but you were planning on doing a presentation on this, right?
So Chair Doran, we do not have a presentation planned for this evening, so I'm, I'm happy to answer that question, which may serve as a mini presentation of sorts.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so essentially I think you can. Think of it as it's basically about three thousand six hundred square feet of land being swapped between the city. And Bohannon Development Corporation, who owns the Menlo Gateway site that surrounds this parcel. And the reason for the exchange of land is really to set the pump station. So there's an existing pump station at thirteen ninety-five Chrysler Drive. And this would set it back further from Chrysler Drive and, um, basically allow for the pump station to be. Rearranged in, in how it's constructed. Um, the current pump station is, uh, I think it can handle a ten-year. Flood event and, uh, the city is designing a pump station that can handle a one-hundred-year flood event, so. This is really a way to set, set the pump station further back from the roadway and to, um, help. Guard the area against, uh, a flood event in the future.
Thank you. Did you have any follow-ups, Commissioner Harris?
Um, I might after public comment. I think that was very helpful.
Okay, uh, Commissioner DeCarty.
I'll try to be better this time. Um, and so what's the use of the land going to be that is essentially swapped out? Or if it works better for the pump, then what, what happens to the land that's getting?
Right, so it'll, it basically the land that's being swapped is, um. Is just going to be added to the, the existing land use designation and zoning of the parcel that it's being switched to, so. The land that the city that city currently owns that's being swapped with Bohannon Development Corporation will go to M three X zoning. And Commercial Business Park, which matches the Menlo Gateway site as current. And then the city, the land that we acquire, it's equal amounts of land being exchanged here. Um, and the land that we acquire will get the public facilities zoning and also the general plan land use designation, so. Each, each party will, will essentially come out of this with the same amount of land that they started with. With the same zoning designations and general planned land uses as existed before, it will just be. In a physically different configuration on the, on the property.
And it automatically is connected to, like, which? Which attachment shows it like, what, parcel one fifty-five? If I'm looking at attachment C, does it? Just automatically attach into that or what's the? It's not a separate small parcel, right? It's connected to something. How big a parcel is that?
Right, so if you're looking at, um. If you are looking at attachment, see the map, the map there. Essentially, there's, there's like a, a central area that's not changing. That says thirteen ninety-five Chrysler Drive right in the center there. That, that's basically existing pump station land that will stay pump station land. And then. On either side of it, you're seeing the land that's going to be swapped between the two different, different parties.
Okay.
Commissioner Harris.
Okay, sorry, so. So that, so the, the. Why is this piece of land better for us, for the pump station? And why is the other piece of land okay for Bohannon? And does, do they get anything out of this swapping?
Right, so it's better for us in that it's setback further from Chrysler Drive and. The arrangement of the parcel, it's, it's a longer parcel, um, which is better for how the pump station has been designed. Um, obviously there's, you know, the pumps and all of the utilities and equipment that are associated with it need to be different. That for a one-hundred-year, to handle a hundred-year flood versus what's currently there for a ten-year flood. Um, what Bohannon Development Corporation gets from this is essentially. It, it hides the pump station a little bit further off of Chrysler Drive, so. Chrysler Drive and Bayfront Expressway is a pretty prominent entrance into this area. And as of right now, the, the existing pump station is kind of a, a very plain, for lack of a better term. Uh, rectangular building that's pretty close to Chrysler Drive and so it kind of sets a. An entrance, uh, image into the area when you drive onto Chrysler Drive and see that, so. Their interest is in pushing this a little bit back further from, from the roadway so that it's a more pleasant experience for, for, uh, people who are coming into the, the area.
Thank you. That's super helpful.
Thank you. So, um, there are no further clarifying questions. I would like to open this application up for public comments. If you have a comment, please raise your hand. Uh, Mr. Turner, do we have any hands raised now?
I do not see any hands raised at the moment. Um, but just as a reminder, if you do have a, if you do want to give public comment, click the hand raise. Raise hand button at the bottom of your screen or if you are calling in, hit star nine on your phone.
No public comments, no hands raised?
I don't see any hands raised at this time.
Okay, I'm gonna close public comment, bring it back to the dais. Um, now that we've clarified, uh, what day, month and year it is, and we've had some discussion already on this application. Um, hoping that someone might want to make a motion at this time. Commissioner Barnes.
I make a motion to approve for the staff report.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Seconded by Commissioner Tate. We have motion second, I'll call the role, Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. DeCarty?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
Yes.
Well, though, yes as well. The application is approved as submitted with a five zero vote. I'll now close the public hearing portion of the meeting. We have informational items. From Ms. Sandmeyer. You're on mute this time.
Thank you. Uh, good evening again. So we have a couple of items for the next meeting, which is November fifteenth. Uh, so we have the Menlo Flat Strap EIR Public Hearing and Study Session. Um, then we have a use permit and architectural control for Phillips Brook School. And then we have a couple other small items. Um, one is for two generators at the five hundred El Camino Real Middle Plaza project. Uh, that concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions from Ms. Sandmeyer?
I have a question.
Please.
Um, Ms. Sandmeyer, uh, when you gather up the, or whoever is going to be assigned gathers up the ADU information. That Ms. Jones, uh, inquired about the number of permits. Um, that have been pulled since two thousand nineteen, I believe. Um, it would be great if you could send that out to the commission. I think that's information that we would definitely, um, appreciate taking a look at.
Yeah, certainly. We can see what, um.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other, uh, questions or anything else from the commission? Okay, uh, I'm going to adjourn this meeting at eight oh nine. I'd like to note for the record, that's pretty darn good. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Chair Doran. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you, Chair Doran. Good night, everyone.